Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This public comment is the first section of the agenda. This is to receive oral communications from members of the public. Members of the public may address the select board for up to three minutes, longer with the permission of the chair. The select board shall not engage in discussion on topics raised during the public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This agenda segment will be limited to 15 minutes unless extended at the discretion of the chair. Do we have any public comment tonight? Hi, Donnie.
How are you guys? Long time no see.
Oh, yeah.
I miss how you was.
Name and address.
So my name is Donald Jarvis. I am no longer a Newbury resident, unfortunately. Today, I live in Bradford. However, I came to share a story and thanks. I may get a little emotional, so I apologize. So I just came in rushed. Back in 2012, I did live in Newbury. And in 2006, I also lived in Newbury when I joined the Army. And I joined the National Guard here in Newbury Port. Deployed to Iraq '07-'08. 11-12, I went to Afghanistan. 2012, February 13th, I was struck by 250 pounds of explosives in Afghanistan that rolled my vehicle, sent me to Germany for a week, and then sent me to the hospital for six months. Coming home, I came back to this community. You guys embraced me, you changed me, and you guys really made me who I am today. Unfortunately, I moved, but there's a little story that ties me back to Newbury that happened last year. So although I was hurt in 2012, I was not awarded the Purple Heart right away. However, I was awarded the Purple Heart last year, and it was actually here in Newbury where I found out I was a Purple Heart recipient. My home of record of being injured was Newbury. And last May, I got the phone call from my aunt, who has three properties here, one of them I lived in. She called me and said I had a few packages here from the government. Didn't know what it was, but I had a strong suspicion what it could be. I went over her house the week before Memorial Day, and I opened up this package. And it's the Purple Heart that was issued to me by the government with the citation. And I can tell you, I broke down kind of emotionally crying here. So I was in Arlington National Cemetery for Veterans Day last year, when I ran into my good friend Brian Willett from the Military Order of Purple Heart. And again, I broke down crying when he told me what Newbury was doing. It means a lot to me. It was very emotional when I got it, and I'm getting emotional now. But I wanted to come before the board and kind of share this story, keeping it quick. But I was really, really touched that the board and Bill have taken this initiative to declare Newbury a Purple Heart community. This is something that I would have done, and I'm sure you guys are aware of this. If I was here in Newbury, I'd be doing what Bill's doing. So it means a lot, and I called Bill almost instantaneously and said I'd like to pay for the first sign, which I did. So I wanted to come tonight. I saw it was on the agenda, and I just wanted to come and say thanks and share the little story.
Well, thank you, Donnie.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jack Ribbicki, 37 Larkin Road. Thank you. Thank you, Bill, for your service, and thank you, Donnie, for sharing your story. It means a lot to everybody here for your sacrifice and Bill's sacrifice. As it is the Purple Heart Ceremony, there's a National Purple Heart Day, August 7th, that is dedicated to this ceremony across the Commonwealth. The ceremony is August 7th and built accordingly. March 29th, at 5:00 at night, I don't think serves the nature of what is, should be done for this award. I think the day dedicated to it should be used to celebrate it, that rushing the event is unnecessary, I think, under every circumstance, and that even the appearance of a conflict of interest under every circumstance is to be avoided. And the fact that this is being rushed under the current circumstances should be taken under consideration, that there's a day dedicated to it, and moving it up isn't necessary in light of what's been done. I offer that it's wonderful that Donnie has come, and I offer that also Karen Tyler, our Essex County Executive Director of Veteran Services, is here, and that she also should be asked of her opinion of when the day should be celebrated, because this is more than a singular person's celebration of a day and not a particular war. It's about the Purple Heart in every war since George Washington established the Medal. And that's why we have a National Day about it, and we don't do singular things for the Purple Heart. I'd just like you to take that into consideration, and I offer the floor to Karen. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Tyler, the Veteran Service Officer for the town. So I want to, Bill spearheaded it, he initiated it, you know, he said, "I want to make Newbury a Purple Heart community." And I was like, "That's fantastic, you know, it's really a great idea. It's great for Newbury, it's great for the citizens, the residents, and all that, all who have served, and most importantly, those who got injured during combat." So I was just, I was just saying that, you know, like he said, that there is a Purple Heart Day in August, and so I think that would be a great day to do like an unveiling, have a ceremony, spend some time and get community involvement, do time to get outreach, and, you know, invite all the veterans. Maybe we can identify, given that timeframe, be able to identify some Purple Heart recipients that live in the town, so that way they could be honored also. And so that's just what I want to share with you in case, you know, just an education piece if you didn't know that there is a Purple Heart Day. But that being said, you know, I want to thank, you know, it was great that Bill brought this, you know, to the town, and you guys are really, I commend you for moving forward with it, doing the proclamation, and becoming a Purple Heart community. So does anybody have any questions? Or, oh, you're not allowed to ask questions? I apologize. All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Are there any other citizens' concerns tonight?
Hi.
Come on up.
I'm Laudergan, 38 Larkin Road. I'm here to be here and to say that we are here, and our petition still stands, and we do not want through traffic on Larkin Road. We don't feel like we're being heard, we don't feel like the safety case is being listened to. There is nothing to gain from Newbury opening this road through traffic. It is very dangerous. We hope to get a meeting that's not just the town meeting, and we're looking for your guidance on how to have that conversation still. 333 of us, 335 of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Bob Ross. I'm on 48 Central Street.
Hi, Bob.
Hi, how are you? I just wanted to say that I haven't been to every meeting that has been on this topic, but in all the meetings I've come to, I still haven't seen one person from the neighborhood stand up and say they want this bridge. 335 people, I guess, signed a petition, and I'm sure there's children on that petition. They'll probably be in the neighborhood longer than some of us. It just, there is sort of this feeling that I'm getting that what people in the neighborhood want is not as important as what individuals who don't live in the neighborhood want. And I don't think that there's been, it doesn't seem to me like there's been an adequate amount of back and forth on some of the topics that have been raised. I thought, is Ms. Heeby, I thought she raised very pertinent questions last week. I think where she was going was, why is this clause in our self-interest in the town of Newbury? She wasn't asking whether it was in her self-interest. I think she was met with derision and obstification. She wasn't allowed to just say, "I want to know why this is in the contract, I want to know why it's here, I want to know who put it here." You know, it could easily have been said, "Well, it was a negotiation with the contractor, the contractor wanted that in there." Seems to me like that's where that was going. But it just seemed like she was being stonewalled. People were rolling their eyes at her. It's just interesting to me, because I'm not from this area, but where I'm from, they announce things, they say, "We're going to have a New England-style town meeting," okay? And everybody knows what that means, right? And I haven't been to one yet here, but what I have seen is that people from the neighborhood have come forward and said, "We don't think this is necessarily a good idea, we'd like to explore other possibilities." Or, you know, "Can you do a traffic study when there's no traffic?" Yes, you can. Okay, so, but those ideas just seem to fall on deaf ears, because people's minds are already made up. I just wanted to say, in my experience, in a small town like this, which is pretty much all of my experience, that's unusual to me. Like, usually, there's more give and take with the people that it's going to immediately affect. And I'm disappointed that I just haven't seen that. I don't know what it means, I don't, I've been here long enough to know that that's a pattern, I'm not going to say that. And I have a great deal of respect for anybody who puts themselves forth to be on this board. I think that's fantastic. We're lucky to have people like you who are willing to do it. But I do think people should be listened to, and I think the general impression in my neighborhood is that we haven't been. So I just wanted to put that forth, and for what it's worth. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. We have time, what time is it, Mike? 7:12, we have time for one more? Does anybody else here? Seeing none? Okay, so I'm going to, the report of the chair, I signed the PR 2217 and the VW 2218. The PR 2217 was for Julie O'Brien, and the VW 2218 was an Amazon, Amazon bill. We have some grants, gifts, and donations. There is a Council on Aging donation from the Friends of the Newbury Council on Aging for $10,695. That is earmarked to be used for new council on aging space furnishings.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
Is Kate here tonight? I don't see her. Kate from the Friends, I was hoping was going to be here tonight, but. So the Newbury Council on Aging, the Friends of the Newbury Council on Aging is, their mission is to raise funds to support the Council on Aging in our, in our community. So this is right up their, their mission statement, so. Have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to second, but thank you, one or two.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council on Aging donation for Joyce Duffy, $10. Council on Aging donation for Alan and Mary Fisk, $5, and a Council on Aging donation from Ray and Avril Merrick for $5.
Motion to accept.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're, Cindy Courier is here, our Council on Aging Director. Do you, do you send in a thank you note to everyone that?
It doesn't matter if it's a dollar or $10,000, I send it every time.
Great, great, thank you. Okay, so public hearings are none, new business. We have approved request for property, for public property use for Manter Field, Purple Heart Town Recognition Ceremony for Bill DeMayo. Before we move on to the request for the public property use, I had Julie pull the minutes from our November 23rd meeting, when we, when Bill first brought this to the board to endorse the proposal to declare Newbury as a Purple Heart town. Motion, JR had moved to endorse it, Jeff had seconded, Bill had explained, passed out information on it. I read the proclamation, and then Jerry, you had made a secondary motion to give a $400 tax abatement to Newbury veterans, do you remember that?
I do.
Yeah, and so we tabled this.
Yes.
So we had never, so Jeff had moved to table the motion, and JR seconded it. So we never voted on it to become a Purple, I mean, to actually become a Purple Heart community. So we did look into the property tax, and I know Jerry and I got copied, but I don't know if the rest of the board.
I never got copied or anything.
Oh, all right, well.
Property tax.
So the, I'll have that forwarded, but there was, because the town of Newbury voted, and I don't know when it is, you know when we voted in to have veterans have a tax abatement? Tracy?
It's a, it's a state exemption.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. So it's a Massachusetts general law exemption that all veterans get a $400 tax break, tax abatement. And to become a Purple Heart recipient, you have to be a veteran, so they're already getting the abatement. So that's been settled.
Why can't they get an additional one? That's, that's my whole point. Give them another, you know, it's nice to have signs saying we're a Purple Heart town, but let's put some money in their pocket, especially now with the cost of gas going up. That was my point, which you people tabled.
I'm sorry you didn't, that wasn't, wasn't clear to me. It just says, "Jerry Heeby moved to give a $400 tax abatement to Newbury veterans who have earned the Purple Heart in their property tax." That's already been given, so you wanted to give, that's not what this motion says, it's an additional $400.
Yes.
Okay. That's not what was moved and seconded, so.
It's quite clear what was moved and seconded, and I don't.
Yeah, Jerry moved to give a $400 tax abatement to Newbury veterans, but they already have that. So I guess we can look into it again.
Sponsored by the state, so I want this sponsored by the town.
Lisa?
So I would need to look at the exemptions. Jerry, as you probably know, there's a whole list of possible exemptions for communities to adopt if they want them to be local, but any exemption would have to be on that list for it to be accepted. So I don't know if there's an additional exemption, so I'm happy to look at that.
That would be great if you could, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mike?
Newbury Port has done something, and I know they've gone above the 4%. George Rolfe would be the person, Attorney General, you want to talk to. He's on, he's on Brownfield Court. He did a lot of work with the city council.
Yeah, I can, it'll also be in the statute.
Yeah, but I'm just.
But it would have to be accepted, if it's in the list, it would have to be accepted by town.
Town, right.
Nonetheless, I'll find out.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, so this. Does that go to town meeting or go to the board, Lisa?
It depends. Most of the exemptions in that section of, I think it's 44, 53, something rather, requires adoption at town meeting, but I need to look.
Yep.
So.
Karen, she, the Veterans Office has had her hand up. Can she speak?
Am I allowed to talk now, or no?
If she has information which would be beneficial, and.
Come on up, Karen.
So I believe what you guys are discussing is the tax exemption, the $400 is for people who have a VA service-connected disability rating of between 10 and 90%, and then it goes up to $1,000 if you are 100% service-connected. And so that's, so that's a state, you know, everyone in Massachusetts, if you have a service-connected disability, you get $400. Now, the towns can go by town meeting and increase that amount. So I think that might be what you guys are talking about.
The town council's going to look into that.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so Lisa, if you could please have something for us before our next meeting?
Sure.
Because I'm going to put this on the agenda for next meeting, to become the Purple Heart community. So now we have the approved request for public property use at Manter Field. I know Bill came before the Rec Committee last night to see if there was a conflict for March 29th at 5, at 5:00 PM. Actually, Bill, I'm going to ask you to come up and explain to the board your rationale behind this.
Sure. Bill DeMayo, 12 Orchard Street, Byfield. What I thought my plan was, before Jack pretty much decided what my plan was, was to have a discussion, not a celebration, on March 29th, to communicate to the town, whoever showed up clearly, what the Order of the Purple Heart was all about, why the town was doing it, we'd get national recognition. Lenny Mira was going to come with a citation. Senator Tarr was going to come as well with a citation. Explain to them, whoever was there, veterans, citizens, leaders of the town, what this was all about, okay? Show them the road sign, which was nicely, the money was donated by Donnie and three other citizens of Newbury, myself. And it would be a communication process. And when we read the proclamation on March 29th, we'd pay particular attention to the last paragraph. "Also be it proclaimed that Newbury, Massachusetts will recognize August 7th annually as Purple Heart Day, and urge our citizens and organizations to display the American flag as well as other public expressions of recognition and appreciation of our Purple Heart recipients." That's what I would talk about, that process. There is plenty of time between March 29th and August 7th to plan a significant event to honor people who received the Purple Heart from all wars. Jack alluded it as if it was something special for me to do it on March 29th. Do you know the significance of March 29th?
Yes, I do.
What is it?
It's Vietnam Veterans Day.
Exactly.
And it would exclude somebody like Donnie Jarvis, wouldn't it?
I chose that day because I'd like you to tell me, what has the town of Newbury done to recognize Vietnam veterans on March 29th?
I don't, I don't know.
Can you tell me, Mike?
All I know is, when I came aboard, I started doing veterans events on Veterans Day, helping with Memorial Day.
Yeah.
The town was not doing anything, okay? So we have had, we have had events since I got on board, okay?
I recognize that.
Right, but all I'm saying is.
Specific to March 29th, I'm talking specific to March 29th. That's why I chose.
Because if there's every, every other, when you turn around, every other day is going to, every day is probably seven things attached to the day.
Very good.
Okay, we had the Vietnam War in.
I, Mike, I understand that, I appreciate that, okay?
I just think.
Let me just explain. I chose March 29th because it had some significance, not because I was in Vietnam, okay? March 29th, we're talking about the proclamation and scheduling an event in August, August 7th, to identify and honor Purple Heart recipients as far back as we can possibly think. Uncles, aunts, daughters, sons, mothers, fathers, from every branch of the service, not Vietnam veterans only, okay? That was the intention. So clearly, I'd like that to be displayed in Newbury chatter when Jack gets back. That's the reality of the situation, okay? March 29th was simply a communication to the community to explain the proclamation, what the Purple Heart meant, and to work on forming a committee or whatever, to tie this all together in a celebration on August 7th. I would be delighted if Jack Ribbicki would channel some of his energy and join that committee and help schedule that event, rather than just be critical of what I'm trying to do.
My question real quickly, as a liaison to the board, that Karen leads, I knew nothing about it, okay?
You knew nothing about what?
I knew nothing about this date, March 29th, until I got my packet.
You don't discuss that at your Eastern Essex.
Hasn't been brought up.
Wow.
The March 29th.
It's a shame, that's a shame.
No, it hasn't been.
It's a shame.
Well, like I said, you know, right now, it's budget season.
Well, this is my little way.
Right, but it's like, we feel.
Of doing something on March 29th of significance to the community.
I'll just tell you right, okay? I think it's a political stunt when you run for election.
I disagree. Motion to approve.
Objection. I have a discussion.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. What we have before us is a public property use.
Yeah.
It's not going to get into a political, a political melee. It's not the time or the place, and quite frankly, it casts a long shadow on veterans who have gone to all the wars since George Washington, as Jack said, and it's shameful, and I'm not going to allow it here, I'm not going to allow it here, that we have a public property use. If this was, if Bill was running a marathon or a bike race and somebody was coming into town, we wouldn't ask that person for the bike race to change the date and change this and change, change that.
If that person were running for selectmen, would you allow them to come in and do whatever they want?
This, I believe this all began last fall, if I remember correctly.
November 23rd is when I presented it.
Yeah, on November 23rd.
I have a question. What happened to the Rec Committee last night?
The Rec Committee doesn't have any, any conflict.
Okay, I tried to find it on YouTube, and what, did they record it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I didn't, it's not up yet.
It'll be up.
Okay, but all I'm saying is, why was the green, that said the lower green was, I just, and I haven't.
So, Mike, again, I've got to go back to this is, this is.
Right, but why not, why not the lower green?
This, well, that's a conversation that you can have with Mr. DeMayo later, but it's not up to us to change what the request is.
I don't, I don't understand the hijack.
Yeah, I don't understand.
I'm just asking a question. Why was the lower green excluded? Because that's where all the monuments are.
Why did you, I guess, Mr. DeMayo, why did you choose this venue?
I made a motion to approve, can we get a second so we can discuss properly?
Bill, Bill, I gotta, I gotta.
I'll second it.
I gotta be honest with you guys. You know, my dad was Lieutenant Colonel in the Air Force. This kind of is, this bothers me, this meeting bothers me intensely. I hate to even be involved in this stuff. It bothers me intensely, especially what's going on overseas right now.
Absolutely.
I just don't, I don't personally want to even be involved in the vote.
And that's, that's why I have a motion to move it, the date.
No, for the reasons, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not talking about what you and Mike are talking about, the whole thing bothers me.
Which is the Purple, Purple Heart Day.
The implications, the whole gosh darn thing. It bothers me. You got someone that wants to go out and try to do something to bring awareness, and we're making it political. Welcome to politics.
It's sinful.
I understand why most people don't want to be on a committee in the town.
Oh.
If you disagree, you get thrown off. That's the truth. I get, I get multiple examples of you like them.
So.
There was a motion, I made a motion, it was seconded, to change it.
He made a motion, we can't change somebody else's event, that person has to change it.
Of course we can.
No, we can't.
Yes, we can. We vote, we vote to allow them the use, why can't we change, change the date?
There's no conflict, there's no good reason.
Of course there's a conflict, there is a conflict. It conflicts with Page 36, Section 2 of the Personnel Policy Manual. Political activity. No officer or employee of the town shall use their office, authority, or influence for the purposes of interfering with an election or affecting the results thereof. So it means, this has the appearance, and it, you know, you're right, it shouldn't have the appearance of a political, of a polit, I'm not finished, of a political stunt, because Mr. DeMayo is running for selectmen. It, and it smacks as being a cute little, a cute little play, and the voters don't like cute plays. And I am actually doing you a favor, Mr. DeMayo, by suggesting a change of date, so we get out of this whole election time cycle. So I'm trying to get you votes like these three are trying to get you elected. I'm doing you a favor. It removes all of the political things if we put it on August 7th to include all veterans of Iraq and Afghanistan, instead of having a meeting for an hour for publicity? I think we know what, what's going on with the.
You expect me to give a campaign speech? Is that what you're implying?
No, no, I will. No, no, I will.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
But I will, I will respond to that.
I didn't come here to debate you people, okay?
Okay.
I just wanna know if I can use the field on, on March 29th. That's, that's the issue.
Okay, so, we have a motion? Julie, can you read that?
Seconded, yep. JR-
Where do we, where do we stand?
I'll tell you where I stand.
Wait a minute, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, Jeff, I wanna hear what the motion is.
JR moved to approve the public property use request, and you had seconded.
Okay, now we're under discussion, okay?
Any legal implications that you see, Lisa? I mean, first of all, I mean, Lenny and Bruce Tarr won't go now, they've destroyed anything you wanna do anyway, Bill.
I'm sorry, Bill.
You know, it's just, you know, it is what it is.
I have no problem with the location of this event. It has a lot to offer. There's plenty of parking, there's a bathroom, and there's beautiful scenery there. I have no problem with the date. Sometimes we do things differently in Newbury. It doesn't have to fall in lockstep with national events. I don't see any problem with this, and I don't know why some people are trying to politicize this. It's, it, I feel disgusted, and maybe I'm out of touch, but I don't, I don't, I don't see it, I don't understand it. This isn't the place for politics. The guy's trying to do something to bring this town together instead of divide it.
Disagree.
What the hell are we doing?
Can I guess, Ms. Heavy made a motion before your motion.
What was your motion?
To change the date, to have it-
And I seconded, and I seconded that.
To have it on-
Did you have that on your end?
August 7th, 2022, which is Purple Hat Day, and, and it's moving it from March 29th, which is the Vietnam Veterans Day, to the Purple Hat Date of August 7th, 2022. And you're absolutely right, we should not politicize this, and I'm trying to remove it from being political, to put it on the date that it should be, as according to Ms. Taylor. The Veterans Officer suggested when she addressed us earlier, so, you know, I'm not being, being political, I'm trying to remove it from politics, because this, you're right, this isn't right. These veterans, they, they sacrifice their limbs, their lives, and we should honor that. And it shouldn't be used as a political pool to get some notoriety for someone who's running for the Board of Selectmen. I'm trying to help and make it less political.
So, I'm not gonna call that vote, because that would be, it's like, we can't, this, this is a request made for public property use. We can't dictate how this applicant uses our property.
I challenge the ruling of the chair then.
I'll second.
One question, Lisa never got a chance to answer my question. Does this seemingly have, even though, I mean, I didn't think of it politically, I honestly never even entered my mind, that's why I'm so really, very, very-
It didn't enter my mind until Jack ranted and raved about it last night.
Disappointed in this. It's okay, doesn't matter, but do we have-
Let him, or answer him.
With what you've heard, and what Jerry and Mike have presented along with Jack and everything else, do we now have what looks like something that we vote on that could have an impropriety for, for us?
So, I, I think if you are a person walking in, and it, there are people that run for office, there are people that are in office, that hold public events for public information on public property all the time, that doesn't make them political. Political and the violation of Conflict of Interest Law, the violation of the campaign political finance law, the reference to the Personnel Bylaw, is if there were signs up there, if people were giving political speeches for election, it doesn't, this is, it appears to be a veterans event, that Mr. DeMayo read the end of the proclamation to talk about the preparation of the, of the Purple Hat Day. I, I have to say, based upon everything I've heard, it does not appear to be a conflict at all.
Ms. Heavy, you haven't commented on the date, though, right, a month before the local election? You don't think that's a conflict?
I think it could be the day of the election, or the day before the election. I don't, I don't think that's the issue.
I think it is.
And one of my, one of my issues always has been, the Newbury Foot News has always favored things, okay? When you ran for the last election, you were on the front page twice. He was in the front page already once, and that's when I knew the candidate was chosen. It's like, the bottom line was, it will be another front page of free advertising for his, for his political event, and I'm sorry.
I, I carried a race to the moving wall, and that was a political event on my part-
No, no, I'm just saying-
Back in September?
But I'm saying-
Didn't even have a dream of putting paperwork-
Of all the people, of all the people, of all the people that they could have taken the picture of, they had you, 'cause I'm telling you, there was a, there's a link between the old editor and, and the town. And it's like I said, that was been told to me.
Okay, so that's, that has nothing to do with public property use?
I know, but it does-
Bill, after all you've heard tonight-
Donnie.
Do you still want to move forward with your event on March 20, 29th?
I'm really disappointed that I have to answer that question.
I am too.
Okay? I'm really disappointed in the town, and right now, I wish I had never come up with a suggestion of making this town a Purple Hat Community, because I think you value politics more than you do recognizing veterans.
Sorry. If that's, can I respond to that?
No, no, Mike.
What, you're gonna give them the last day?
So, is this going to, are we going to withdraw this?
I challenge, I challenge the, the chair, your ruling.
Which was?
Julie, did you think the date?
Yeah, yeah, no.
You didn't allow my motion. Julie seconded motion. You don't have the authority to do that, Madam Chair.
I don't, and I'll ask Town Council to, to advise on this, but I don't see how we can ask an applicant to change his event-
You just did.
To how we, no, I asked him if he wanted to withdraw.
Oh, okay.
I didn't ask him if he wanted to change it to another date and, and do all the legwork that has to happen to do all that stuff. That's not the town, I don't believe that's the town's role. I think that we just approve public property use, and that's it. We can't, if, if there was a bike race coming through, or a, a marathon coming through, I mean, we either deny, or we accept. We can't say to them, well, we really don't want it on this date, I want you to go back and do it on this date, you do all the advertising, you change everything that you have done in place, and then you can come back.
Then why did you check with the Rec Committee last night to see if there was a conflict, 'cause you were gonna change it, if there was, right?
No, no, he wouldn't have been able to use this. If there was soccer games, or- That, he wouldn't have been able to use the field.
Let's do this, let's do this. Jerry Heavy, what was your, Jerry, what was your-
My motion was to change the date from March 29th to August 7th.
I don't think we can do that.
Change the date meaning what? To what?
August 7th.
Who's gonna run, who's gonna run the event out there?
The same people who are running it now.
Who, no. Do, do you think Bill's gonna run it?
I should hope so, perhaps the veterans' agent would be here.
Why don't you ask him if he wants, ask him if he wants to run it?
Maybe Mr. Rebicki can run it.
Maybe he could, and he'd probably do a very good job, too.
Well, now you, now this has really gotten to be great.
So, Lisa, there's a challenge of my ruling? I don't know.
Well, I, I don't, I don't have the rules of the board here, but typically, you asked for, I didn't hear the recognition of the motion and the second. I heard the chair recognize a motion from JR and a second yourself. So it's, I believe it's up to the board. I don't have, I don't have your rules in front of me, so I don't know the answer to that.
I love the play of tape over, I said it, and she seconded it, she heard it. I know my voice is a good one.
So, do I have the authority to dictate when somebody else, when a thing comes before me, that to make him do it on another day and time?
No, you, you can't do that.
That's what, well, that's what she's asking me to do.
So, you have, you have two choices, Madam Chair. You can either vote on the motion that you've recognized, or you can vote on the motion that Ms. Heavy says she's made and was seconded, and see what happens with that, and then go to your other motion. I mean-
All right, we'll do it that way. So, Jerry, can you restate your, unless, Julie, did you get it?
Jerry's motion is to change the date from the March 29th to the August 7th for the event, for Mr. DeMayo's event.
Is that what your motion is?
Yes.
Okay, and Mike, did you second, second there?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I'll call a vote. All in favor?
It's, Bill doesn't even, Bill hasn't said he's gonna do it. You're out of your minds, you're all out of your minds.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure there are enough, I'm sure there are enough veterans in town who will, who will assist.
And I don't believe there's anything that says you declare yourself to be a Purple Hat Town only on August 7th.
There isn't.
I believe you can do it any day of the year, okay? I'll gladly collect some data-
Until I make Christmas.
-and supply that data to you people, okay? Of, of when other towns have declared themselves as Purple Hat Towns.
Well, what's wrong with August 2nd, 7th, excuse me? That's the Purple Hat Day.
Why do I have to wait to declare the town on August 7th? That's the Purple Hat, why can't I declare it tomorrow? Other towns have.
We've, we've accepted it. You don't need to even have this little celebration. We've accepted it, it is a Purple Hat Town.
You have, you haven't accepted, you haven't voted on it.
All right, so, so I have, excuse me-
No, you haven't.
All right, Mr. DeMayo, can you have a take a seat, please? Jerry has a motion and a second, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye.
You haven't even got Bill, how can, Bill hasn't even said whether he could do it-
That's why I'm opposed to it.
All right, I'm opposed to it.
It's not gonna happen. Okay, so now we have, that motion's failed, so now Julie, what's the second?
JR had moved urgently to approve the request from Mr. DeMayo, and you had seconded. Property request, as stated, on his paperwork.
Okay. So... Something makes me sick. Okay, let's take a vote on that. All, all in favor?
Aye.
May I, may I ask a question?
No, you may not. This is the board talking.
And we don't believe in democracy, sorry.
I would love to say, I, I don't turn down property requests anyway, so I'm not gonna turn down this one, but you still don't know if Bill's gonna even do it after this.
Right. So, this is a request for public property use.
You're not gonna grant, you're not gonna grant something that someone's not gonna do.
So...
You're not gonna tie the property up. If Bill's gonna do it, then that's, then I'll vote for it. If he's not gonna do it, then don't vote for it.
He can make a motion, and we table it till the next meeting, and then we discuss it at the next meeting, and he can make it, he can make his mind up.
Maybe the Boston Globe will be in, you know, trying to get done with this one.
Probably.
I second your motion, Mr. Doyle.
Do we have to finish?
Well, she, now there's a motion to table it.
Could that be recognized?
Is it something new?
Yeah.
Come on up.
I, I started this process to declare Newbury a Purple Hat Town, and I'm gonna finish it. I'm not gonna have a celebration, I'm not gonna sign up to have a celebration or do anything on, on August 7th, based on what I hear this evening, okay?
August 7th?
August 7th, we'll do it August 7th, don't worry.
I will not do it August 7th.
Well, the town will do it.
You can choose to do it if you like.
Fine.
I will get the town to clear the Purple Hat Town, get that recognized nationally, and that's all I'll do.
Okay, so, this, do you wanna withdraw this?
I withdraw it.
Okay, so, I move to pass on the request for public property use on Mantle Field. We're gonna pass over that. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we have a business license renewal for Channel Street, Pierre, DBA, Barker's, Barber, 89 Hanover Street, Unit 1A for dog grooming.
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we have clam license, clam licenses. Mr. Patino is here, I see him in the back room. Hi, Peter, how are you? I have a question about this before I move to vote. Do you have any concerns with any? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Peter Patino, I'm chairman of the Fish Commission in Newbury.
Hi, Pete. Do you have any, anything that you wanna tell us about this list, or is-
No, we're really happy with it. We have about three or four new clammers, so our numbers have gone up this year. We're real happy with that.
Oh, fabulous.
As far as the clam licenses go, everything's in order. Everybody had their appropriate identifications and residences, so we're looking good. Price of clams are up, everybody's happy, it's clam at high tide. I do wanna thank the town, if they're gonna go into that green crab, you're gonna put a motion, I guess, into the-
Town, town meeting.
Yeah, and, and the Fish Commission to support that, we've spoken about it.
Okay, great.
Did you have many people partake in that? You had some guys doing it?
We have three guys, two to three guys. One guy's now a lobsterman, he may not be doing it anymore, but we have at least two that have been doing it, and we had one that was doing it and wasn't even able to sell the product.
I was gonna say, it's like, what are they doing with it?
He did it just to keep the-
Keep the crabs, keep them up, yeah.
Right, yeah, so-
A little, a little history on that for everyone, and I'm not saying this because it's something that I was part of, but we initiated some of the money for green crab with the studies that Peter Pippin and I do on the restoration of the green marsh. And the, the great marsh runs into tremendous implications of predation from the amount of green crab that we have in it. So we put forth this idea of subsidizing some of the people in the towns that clam, that are out in boats, to capture the green crab in traps and either put them into certain land, well, landfills, the compost place, let's say, and Ipswich, or Find, a culinary, they're eaten in Europe, and they're eaten, and soft-shell clams, and everyone loves them in Europe. If we could get it going here, then these things would come under control. They eat our soft-shell clams, they supposedly burrow in the banks, they do all these things that, and they've been around a long time. So, this green crab trapping program was established, I think about a decade ago, and the state always said that they were gonna only participate in subsidizing it for a certain amount of time, and that the towns were going to take over in helping participate and sponsor the clambers to at least buy some traps to get them out there, you know, as a way of reducing the numbers of green crabs. Now, green crabs have become maybe a good deal now, because they sell them to the tag fishing industry during the season, but most of the guys that are trapping green crab also go a lot longer than just the use of June and July and maybe early August. They're, they're doing it all season, so they're trying to find ways to really get it. We need to get them out of the system. So that's how this all came about, and we all talked about maybe being able to, I think Essex has it now, I think Gloucester's putting it in, and Ipswich has it for a long, a long time.
They've had it for years, yeah.
So we were the only ones, and Raleigh's gonna probably do something to, we were the only ones kinda lagging behind, so that's how this all got put in place with the good work of Peter.
Well, not really.
So, Peter, I have a question. You have, on this paper here, there's two people that are, under their state license, it says pending?
Yeah, those would be you fellows. They have to get their county license before they can get their-
Okay.
License from the state.
Okay.
And even if they try to get it first, it's such, the state's really slow this year, I'm coming back with the certificates.
Okay.
Other question?
Yes.
Some of the clambers paid $300, some $100, what's, how do you do?
If you're a student, or if you're an old guy, you get, you get to pay less, yeah.
Wow, be a good deal for free there.
Yeah.
I got, it's just what I wanted to do, now it's done.
Non-commercial, if you're old, you get it for free, so.
Any other questions for Pete? Um, okay, so I'm gonna read these, go down the list, um, I'm gonna take them as one whole list, if you.
I'm gonna read yours from any one with the last name Colby, there are no.
There's a few of them.
But just because.
Yeah, okay, so, um, I'll go down, I'll call the first five till we get to Colby, and then, um, I'll vote those, then we'll vote the Colbys, and then we'll come back and vote the others, just call a hold if you wanna hold a name for some reason. So, did you, do we have a motion, do I have a motion to approve these yet?
Motion to approve, point of existence.
Okay. Kyle Adams, 42 Cottage, Cottage Road, Frank E. Bennett, 131 High Road, Peter Britz, 70 Pine Island Road, Kaylee Foley, 9 Bittersweet Lane, Gus Campatelli, 12 Main Street, Tim Castine, 6A Rogers Lane.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, JR, you wanna recuse yourself from these here? Um, Ben Colby, 158 Elm Street, Charles Colby, 142 High Road. Yeah, why don't you? Thank you, Jerry. Okay, so Ben Colby, 158 Elm Street. Charles.
That's what I said, one day.
Okay, so, uh, Ben Colby, 158 Elm Street, Charles Colby, 142 High Road, Charles Colby Jr., 56 R. Central Street, Byfield, uh, Charles A., Gavin Colby, 56 R. Central Street, Byfield, Laura Colby, 171 Hay Street, Mason Colby, 56 R. Central Street, Byfield, Nicholas Colby, 30 Central Street, Robert Colby, 171 Hay Street.
Motion to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, can you get them? Can you get them?
You can't get out there for me. What happens if there's a fire?
I'm here alone.
Okay.
I'll go get them.
Okay. I'm gonna pick up with Leonard Dobson, 12 Right Rear Old Point, I'm gonna assume that's.
Neil Conley.
Neil Conley.
Oh, sorry, Neil Conley, 39 Low Street, Leonard Dobson, 12 Right Rear Road, Right Rear, I'm gonna assume that's Old Point Road. Jay Dodge, 45 Fruit Street, Joshua Dodge, 45 Fruit Street, David Elwell, 48 Fruit Street, Douglas Foley, 9 Bittersweet Lane, Zachary Fournier, 12 Wayside Ave, Robert A. Fournier, 15 Spring Hill Road, Byfield, Emmett Hall, 46 Low Street, Fred Hoistrat, 35 Old Rowley Road, Dan Iwanowitz, 14 Wayside Ave, Jeffrey Jammeran, 32 Forest Street, Cole, Neil, and Ross Lochek, all at 113 Main Street, Alexander Maxon, 7 Myers Lane, Noah Mero, 131 High Road, Peter Moran, 33 Spring Hill Road, David Morse, 119 Main Street, Cody Nixon, 53 Plum Island Turnpike, Corey Nixon, 53 Plum Island Turnpike, Michael T. Nixon, 53 Plum Island Turnpike, more triplets, okay, Casey O'Brien, 2 Church Street, William Papoulis, 48 Cottage Road, Samuel Richard, 35 Old Rowley Road, John Short, 120 Main Street, uh, in Byfield, William Short, 145 Main Street, John K. Thistlewood III, 26 Central Street, Peter A. Thistlewood, 26 Central Street, Jim Welch, 10 Withington Street, Robert West, 9 Church Street, Russell West, Timothy West, all of 9 Church Street, Byfield, Thomas White, 36 Downfall Road, Jacob Wood and Stephen Wood, 9 Lund Street, in Byfield.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, sir.
Yep, do you think you'll have more, you usually have a few more strangles coming in, right?
Yeah, hopefully, right, 'cause you got an extra hundred dollars for all the late guys. And as a Vietnam veteran, and I'm here, and I've listened to this, I wanna thank you for trying to do what you did on Vietnam Veterans Day. Unbelievable, just unbelievable.
Okay, so, um, next, we have review and approve personnel policy manual updates. Mark Leckman.
Thank you. Mark Leckman, 28 Riverview Drive, here is the chair of the HR Board. Just wanted to give you a brief overview of what I think was in your package a week or so ago, excuse me. In, in periodically reviewing pieces of the, the policy as it relates to things that are happening in and around the town, we realized that some of the wording in the retiree benefits section needed some updating, and we needed to do that so that it would conform with the Essex County Retirement Systems Language, which it needed to map to. The personnel policy was written as a living document, meaning that it would need to change as laws change, as statute changes, as our policies and procedures change, and since it hadn't been completely reviewed and updated since its creation in 2019, we took the opportunity to review the entire document, along with members of Town Council's office, to ensure that all the additional editing was done at the same time, to make it convenient. I just wanna take a minute and, and recognize Diane Doyle's efforts in this process. Diane is the town's treasurer-collector and a member of the HR Board for a number of years, and she took it upon herself and spent a tremendous amount of time poring through that document multiple times, it's a 63 or 64-page document that we're very proud of. Took us a long time to create it, three, four years ago, but again, we recognized that it was time that it would get updated, and this was an opportune time to do that. So Diane.
All of us, thank you for the yeoman's work you did.
Thank you, Diane.
Just a tremendous effort on her part, along with that of Town Council's office. Most of the other changes that were made are what we would call wordsmithing changes, uh, you know, things that are basic, things that needed updating, modernization of, of, of language as it relates to the Town Administrator Act, so forth and so on. The only other area of significance that was changed was the second point, which is the language that related to compensation of non-exempt employees during times of emergency closure of offices, and as we reviewed that language, there was some ambiguity in it that required some updating, and we also wanted to make sure that that language adhered to the mass fear labor standards policies, which it now does. Uh, so, what we have in front of you tonight is those edits that were made and reviewed along the Town Council's office. Based on the personnel bylaw of the town of Newbury, it was required of us as the HR Board to vote to bring it forward to you, but we have no jurisdiction over the language, it's up to the Select Board to agree, or to accept, or not accept, if you will, the new language. So, if you choose to do so, which we hope you will, then what will happen is that, I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what's in front of you is not completely formatted properly, so I think what will happen is, is if you agree with the changes to the language, it will let it go back to Town Council's office for formal, for formatting, excuse me, and then brought to you perhaps at the next meeting, just so you can officially vote on it, acceptance, so.
Does this have to go to town meeting too?
No. One of the reasons it's going to you is that that was changed at town meeting, Mike, I think it was two or three years ago, it was decided that, again, because this is a living document, and it's gonna change from time to time, what we didn't want is have to wait six months or a year to go to, to go to town meeting, we wanted to be in your purview, we bring it forward, we voted on it, we voted unanimously that these were the appropriate changes, and now it's in your jurisdiction to decide if you want that adopted. Questions?
Trace, I'm Tracy, Jerry.
I, I noticed throughout it, wherever it gave a function to the Select Board, the Select Board was removed and the Town Administrator was inserted, and to me, it's the Select Board that makes policy, and the Town Administrator administers it, so I don't know why all of these changes were done. It seems to me that's in violation of the TA ordinance that we did in 2008 and 2019, which states that the administrat, uh, this, the Board of Selectmen, the administration of all the fiscal prudential and municipal affairs of the town shall remain vested in the Executive Board headed by the Board of Selectmen. So I don't know why the Select Board suddenly has no work to do, I mean, why have a Select Board?
Well, as a layperson, my understanding is that the only times that that language was changed is related to issues that fall under the jurisdiction of the Town Administrator, as opposed to the Selectmen, based on the Town Administrator form of government. Perhaps Town Council can speak to that.
So I can briefly, my partner Kate Federoff is the one who had up, headed up the effort, so if you read on Ms. Heavy in the Town Administrators Act, there's a very specific section about the authority of the Town Administrator, and so the changes in the HR policy relate directly back to the Town Administrator Act in that section, it has nothing to do with the broad authority of the Board of Selectmen relative to fiscal year, uh, excuse me, fiscal policy, general policy, and things of that nature, so changes were related directly back to the Town Administrator's authority given in the Town Administrators Act. Um, I'm happy to have Kate provide a direct reference to you for all of those changes, it's not a problem, but we had to do that, I mean, we had to do that, direct reference anyway, so if, if you're concerned about that, happy to do it, but that's exactly the, the reference.
Yeah, I would appreciate.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Wanna say thanks for all the hard work, everybody involved, good job.
Thank Diane, I was just along for the ride.
Tasks that I had to get excited about.
Thank you, Diane.
It has to be done.
Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion to accept this policy.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Now, this will come before us one more time, right? That's what, after it's all.
We're gonna reformat it, and I'll provide the outline to Selectman Heavy.
Okay. Okay, so, now under all business, we have to execute the right-of-entry agreement for Larkin Road. And we have Town Council here that's gonna explain this to us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board, you might recall at the last meeting when you approved the intermunicipal agreement, which was the agreement between the town of Georgetown and the town of Newbury relative to the installation of municipal services, uh, that we referred to the right-of-entry to allow the contractor and developer to actually do the work on the culvert. So, um, I've provided a right-of-entry, and as a, as an overview, um, the right-of-entry, first of all, describes the area in which the, and I've also provided all the attachments too, so you should have received those all last week. The right-of-entry describes, describes a specific area in which the work is gonna be done, and that's identified on the plan on Exhibit A, which is a proposed culvert area, or something of that nature, that's the, the name of it, existing culvert to be replaced, and there's a specific identified area on the plan. And then, it talks about what work is to be done, and so, um, in, in relationship to the concern that Selectman Heavy had, which we said was gonna be included in the right-of-entry, which is the approved plans, uh, the approved construction drawings, the conservation commission order conditions, and the extension, the approval of the Army Corps of Engineers, and the signed-off plans from the Department of Transportation are all included as the plans, that includes the permit in order for the work to be done, so that's the scope of work, so it's limited to that. Uh, this document also has the developer taking and assuming the risk for all the work that is to be done, including all the employees, signees, and consultants. It provides an indemnification of the town, it requires the developer to insure the town as well, and to have a certificate of insurance, which we've already been provided and updated, and it also requires this to be done at the sole cost and expense of the developer, and it requires the developer to provide a surety to the town to be assured that the work is performed, uh, and the bridges, the culvert is complete in the amount of $300,000, so that either can be in a bond or other form of surety. Uh, I was informed by the Developers Council today that they would choose a tripartite agreement. Uh, for those of you who don't know what a tripartite agreement is, essentially, it's an agreement with a bank, where the bank says, we're gonna hold X number of dollars, in this instance, $300,000, until the work is done, they can't release that money until the town signs off on it. So, it's, it's a bank holding money in an account noted as the developer's account, but the bank agrees not to release the funds until the town signs off on it, so that's part of the agreement as well. It ties back to the intermunicipal agreement timeframe, that the work has to be done in 150 days, and that's in here too. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lisa. Um, any questions from the board? Jerry?
In the first paragraph, that's not a typo, the, the contractor is Godzilla.
Um, I don't pick the name of the developer.
But it, it does read Godzilla.
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you. I thought it was, I thought I misread it, I had to read it a few times.
That makes two of us.
Okay, JR? Mike, any questions? Okay, so, thank you, Lisa, I know this was a lot of work. So, I, I do wanna let the board know that, um, there's been some questions, or some concerns that we've all heard from the neighbors regarding traffic mitigation, and, um, there will be, there's a meeting scheduled coming up, not this week, but next, with the neighbors and public safety, and.
What, what's reading?
It's this week.
The 17th, I thought.
No.
So.
The 17th, so. No, it's not a Select Board meeting, I didn't post it.
Where is it?
It'll be held here, probably right, right in here.
Well, we should post it, if we all.
Yeah, case everyone posted.
I'll talk to Julie about having it posted.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely.
So, that's.
The topic of the meeting is?
No, it's just gonna discuss traffic.
Okay, with, with the neighbors.
With the neighbors.
So, what's?
To just, just to hear their concerns.
So it's March 17th?
No.
What's the date?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What time?
12 noon.
12 noon. It's a great time for a lot of people to work.
Right here. So, um, traffic mitigation, we have heard it, and there will be some mitigation done for it. So, can I have a motion to accept this right-of-entry agreement?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Jerry?
I'm, I'm gonna vote against it, because I, I think we're putting, again, the cart before the horse, you know, we, we're meeting the people after we've signed two documents last time in this document, and frankly, there are 335 people who are residents of the town who say they don't want it, as opposed to, you know, the benefit to the contractor and taxpayers.
There's no benefit to the contractor on this.
Excuse me, Mr. Colton.
And I apologize.
Nope, excuse me, no, no, thank you.
But I sit here and take abuse every time.
I, I'm sorry, but no, thank you.
I'm sorry, my statement, you interpreted my simple statement as abuse, it wasn't my intent, sir.
But, but you're directing it to me, there's no advantage to us, I would rather not to the bridge, I'd save money.
Listen, listen, stop.
Then why are we here?
Stop, stop, okay, stop, you're not gonna vote on it, okay.
I am not voting on it.
You're abstaining, okay.
I'm not abstaining, I'm, I'm voting against it.
So hold on, then, let's take, let's take the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed?
All.
Okay, the motion passes. Okay, so, Jerry, you can have a conversation with Mr. Colton outside after this meeting, if you, if you like.
My phone number's everywhere, call me anytime you'd like, I'd be glad to talk to you.
Um, next, we have the Town Administrator's report, do you have a report, you just gave us one last week?
I don't have a report, um, tonight, Madam Chair, but I, I, if I may, um, it was brought to my attention earlier in the week that there was a concern that I have, I may have misspoken at the March, I believe it was the March 1st Select Board meeting. Madam Chair, when you asked me directly, we were discussing the Fire Department proposal for replacing their command vehicle, you asked me, and I went back and watched it, just to be clear, um, if it had been through the capital planning process, and I responded in the affirmative, and furthermore, Selectman Heavy asked me if it had been approved, the Opera Funds were approved, and I acknowledged in the affirmative as well that it had, so I wanted to clarify a couple of things that are going on simultaneously right now. that are going on simultaneously right now. First, the town is currently engaged in a long-term capital planning endeavor. You may recall, we had a kickoff, I think it was back in October. We, I received grant funding from the community compact agreements. We engaged the Collins Center, and they were helping us. Our last one was done, I believe it was released in 2018. So we're engaged in doing the update. Back in December, the police chief, fire chief, DBW Director, and IT Director all presented to the Collins Center. And that application was included for replacement of that vehicle. At the time, it was presented as a replacement of $80,000 for a 2012 Ford Expedition. And the replacement was projected to be in 2025. Since that time, obviously, we've had some issues occurring, not catastrophic, but issues, electrical issues in nature. And in consultation with the Fire Chief, we decided that it made sense to accelerate it. So at that point, it was brought to you for action. The Capital Planning Committee is separate from our long-range capital planning endeavors that we're engaged in now. Their mission is, among other things, providing a list of town assets, protecting the town's capital investment, minimizing future maintenance and replacement costs, and preparing an annual capital budget. That annual capital budget, they take action in their meetings for those items that are going to be appearing on the annual town meeting warrant. So we have the annual issues as well as the long term. It's not on their agenda, it doesn't appear on their agenda until the 10th, okay? In addition to that, we talked about ARPA grant funding. And with the issuance of the final rule, things became a little bit simpler for our communities. It allowed Newbury and it allowed us to claim the first $10 million of all of our fiscal recovery grant money as revenue loss. That was our entire, I mean, we had less than $10 million, we had $2.1 million. So all of our funds were eligible for the revenue loss category. That allowed us to use funds for general government, services, construction, road building, maintenance, health services, other general government administration, and public safety, in particular, purchases of vehicles. We talked about how those funds had to be committed by 2024 and completely expended by 2026. So our ARPA grant applications, we kind of took a belt-and-suspenders approach rather than just me approving them and the town accountant approving them. In addition, we hired an outside consultant, Clifton Larson Allen LLP, to assist us in making those determinations. So before anything comes before this board, it's already gotten their approval. And that was what I was trying to explain to you, Select and Heavy, when you questioned twice about whether it was ARPA-approved. So that was what I meant. As far as working with them, we have to follow AICPA's Code of Conduct. We have a Code of Professional Conduct, ethics, ethical principles of integrity, objectivity, professional competence, and the likes. They all come into play. But I just wanted to make it clear that even though we're seeking their approval and they're giving us guidance on that, there's nothing anywhere that requires that the Capital Planning Committee approve a project before it can be granted ARPA. It can be granted funding under the ARPA program. So I hope with these comments I make things a little bit clearer. Nothing that I said was meant to confuse or mislead anyone at the table.
So my question, when I asked about capital, if it's going through capital planning, I know, I remember seeing a schedule of all the capital assets that the town has, and it's on a rotating replacement schedule.
Yep.
This, this fire truck and the police vehicle, actually, are already on that schedule, right? So they've already been, I want to call it through capital planning. The Capital Planning Committee is aware that we own these assets and they're on a schedule to be replaced.
That's what we're engaged in updating right now. We're doing our long-term capital plan.
Okay, so it's not like we were buying a new vehicle, like an additional vehicle. This was something, that was my concern that. But did you have any more clear questions?
Don't look at me, I wasn't, I did raise the issue about being confused, so.
Okay.
Oh, I'll follow you, Neil, I got it.
Yes, one question?
Yeah.
Tracy? When you came to the meeting to, about the $200,000 for the Plum Island bathhouse.
When I came to what?
The meeting, and you said we could use the $200,000 for the bathhouse.
Yep.
Okay? So when I was filing that paperwork, I found paperwork that you sent me on 8/10/20, okay? And the price then was, we anticipate $125,000. So you're telling, in that short period of time, it went up from $125,000 to $200,000?
I have all the documentation provided by the DBW Director.
I'm happy, I.
The town did vote it down. They did.
No, I'm just talking about the inflation. And you look at construction costs in the last year.
It's a huge jump.
Okay. So we had some correspondence. Division of Marine Fisheries was scheduled, closing, digging schedule from February 17th to March 4th. We have a letter from Xfinity changing service once again.
Take it away and add it.
As part of our ongoing commitment to keep you and our customers informed about changes to Xfinity TV services, we wanted to update you that effective March 31st, 2022, Fox Life will cease operations. Customers are receiving notice of this information in their bill. Please feel free to contact me at PatrickSheensComcast.com should you have any questions. We also received notification from the MBTA. The MBTA liaison is giving us an update on the upcoming spring service changes. The spring service changes will reflect the following to support ridership across the system, continue to preserve access and quality of service for transit-critical communities, provide sufficient service for returning riders and increase travel, accommodate riders who are returning to in-person school or work, support new travel patterns and behaviors. Bus service changes will be effective Sunday, March 13th, 2022. And the new schedules will be posted in early March. For more information about bus, subway, commuter rail, and ferry service changes in the spring, please visit www.mbt.com backslash servicechanges. And that's that. So. Any meeting updates?
Just one, Madam Chairman.
Yes?
The Essex County Veterans Met, we got our final budget, which I forwarded in this place. New resportion this year will be $31,267.2. And I think Karen's left, but she's, it's been a tight year because we lost Hamilton to win it. And it's like, she did a good job keeping the budget down, so.
Is there an increase to our budget?
There's a slight increase. But it's like, overall, it could have been worse.
Okay.
If the board wants, I didn't make copies, but I'll pass it down. Okay?